Ray, when you are, sir.
All rise. And the commission, we can announce the nation's session. The honorable mayor Jeff Mason is now presiding.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Chad, would you start us in prayer this morning? Or the second name?
Let's pray. Dear my father, thank you for this day today, Lord. Thank you for being so good to us. Lord be with us tonight as we do county business. Give us guidance and direction. Be with all the ones that have lost loved ones this week and the sick and the faked. Just lead us, guide us in these names of prayer with gracious and holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Jonathan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
You may, you may be seated. All right. Stacy, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
No public comments. All right. Would you do us a roll call, please, Stacy?
Richie Gregory?
Here.
Helen Vose?
Here.
Terry Gibbons?
Here.
Billy Bass?
Here.
Greta Kirby?
Here.
Charles Kent?
Here.
Ron Pascal? Lynn Brown? Scotty Barrett? Matt Inyard?
Here.
Glenn Lester?
Here.
Cordell Smith?
Here.
Danny Irisari?
Here.
Stephen Leish?
Here.
Eddie Stout?
Here.
Justin Malden?
Here.
Javen Cripps?
Here.
Tommy Bane?
Here.
Junior Fields?
Here.
Connor McDonald? Teresa Bush?
Here.
Danny Huff?
Here.
Ed De La Rosa?
All right. We have eighteen here, so we do have four. Thank you. All right. Item number six is the approval of the July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five court meeting. At this time, I would take a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve second.
Want you to approve Danny Huff second. Junior Fields, I have a motion and a second. Any questions, discussions, or corrections?
Yes. I have four. For this motion.
Oh, okay. It says Daniels did a bill. All right. We will make that change. Sorry about that. All right. I have a motion and a second with one correction, changing from Danny to Billy. I don't know who's talking worse about each other there. All right. So we'll make that change. Any other corrections? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? All right. Means passed. All right. Item number seven, in your package, you do have Commissioner K.C. Elrod's official resignation letter, and we will run a ad and get that seat filled at our September meeting. Uh, the September meeting will be at the Jalen Court Facility. This was already booked for another event, so we will be over there that night. Uh, also, the Tennessee County Commissioners Regional Meeting is September ninth, and registration's at five thirty, and the meeting starts at six. And that's at the Leslie Town Center for your County Commission Regional Meetings. Uh, tonight, we are very blessed to have Mr. Charlie Curtis with us. Charlie, he comes by and just to give us an update on some things and talk to us about his business, and we appreciate Mr. Charlie being here. Come on down. Charlie is your executive director of the Commission Association. For those of you that might not know.
I appreciate y'all out there. Please, I want to make that mention now. Mrs. Mayor said, my name is Charlie Curtis. I'm not somebody special. I still live on the side of the border by the right, though. I can help any of you anytime. I work for you. I don't work for anybody else. I just work for the county commission. We sixteen hundred and twenty-three, all ninety-five counties add up. Whatever my needs, whatever seeks to go. And thank God, I don't have to go call at the same time. If you got something to write, I'm gonna give you my cell phone. Nine three one. Six six zero seven. One nine eight two. That's my cell number. Call me anytime you need me. If you call me past ten o'clock, I'll answer. I won't let you upset. You gotta have me call. The County Commissioners Association started back in the sixties. Then it was a magic association back then. I'm going to call it some license, constitutional change. Magic, justice, and peace. County Commissioners Association has five committees, which you may or may not be interested in serving on. Veterans Committee, Transportation Committee, Membership Committee, Emergency Services Committee. We just started this is first year in governmental affairs. Because any of these straps that hit us with you, use volunteer service. We, we meet, governmental affairs will meet in February, early February, in eleven, in the fairgrounds. We go through every building, still a county government. And that committee decides what we're for and what we're against. My concerns on that, Michael had his concerns on that committee. But if you can't attend, I would sign up with the committee just because you get weekly emails and you keep track of what bill you're interested in, in these committees. The mayor already mentioned this, maybe September ninth. It'll be a good bill and good fellowship. We'll be there a couple hours, you'll get two hours training credit. And you're fine. This bill that you were doing in eleven, last year we spent, or this year here, we spent five hours. So everybody was in that meeting, got five hours credit. So being there, they'll do all that legislation. But, uh, I know y'all are gonna vote on the general service tax. When I was on the county commission in the eighties, it, we had a private act in White County, twenty-five cents a ton. The legislature passed the bill, knocked it down to fifteen cents a ton. First time ever, now, y'all, y'all can raise it to forty cents. This year, in five more years, you can raise it to another decade. Five more years, you get up to thirty cents. Every penny, that has to go to the highway. That wasn't really often. This bill, back in the seventies, it was in the eighties when they established that fifteen cents. It hasn't been that way ever since. But might say, oh, y'all, no, I'm not so dictatorial as that in the office. I'm gonna y'all. I served on the county commission. I served as county mayor. I served in terms and legislation. This is my last year of working for y'all. If you need me calling, don't feel bad. Everybody will call me, say, I'm sorry I didn't bother you. I'll say, you ain't bothering me. This what I'm getting paid for. But, uh, I, I appreciate y'all letting the company talk. I'll be out here working, finishing the business, getting back home. Hope to pray God bless each and every one of y'all having a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Charlie. Appreciate you coming down. Is there any other announcements before we move on? All right. Seeing none, item eight is amendments to the agenda, agenda and approval, leave. Approval of the agenda, I can't speak tonight. Uh, resolution eight twenty-five fourteen is a hazard, natural hazard mitigation plan resolution that we need to pass for our emergency management authority. So that would take a motion to add that resolution and approve the agenda as written.
Motion to add that resolution. Second.
Okay. Have a motion. Junior Fields and a second. Commissioner Matt Inyard, any other questions, discussions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Uh, opposed? All right. Your agenda is approved. That's it. Thank you. Uh, item number nine is county mayor report. I'll run something by you real quick and make sure that there's no, uh... So when we, we got a courthouse grant, we went out and bid windows. Well, the windows came back and the winning bidder was...
Two seventy?
I think it was about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to replace all the windows in the, in the courthouse. Now, that's vinyl windows with the fake wood frame looking. So, uh, we felt good. Uh, there was a bid for replacing, going back with the wood windows, which was probably three times that price. And we kind of looked at it and said, you know, it makes more sense to, to go with the vinyl windows because, number one, they're more efficient, and number two, it's a lot less expensive to do it that way. Well, again, I, I'm not gonna say that there was pushback from, from any government organization, but there were some that, that may have bid on that, that are pushing back saying, well, no, that's the historical register, you have to use the wood. And we can't, you know, and we talked to engineers, Dave and I talked about it, Jeremy and I talked about it. If we can save seven hundred thousand dollars and put vinyl windows, which are more efficient, and they take us off the historical register, I don't see the problem with that unless somebody else. I mean, we don't get a lot of benefits by, I mean, it's, we still call it the historic Smith County courthouse. It just may not be buried in a book somewhere. So, uh, now, if the historical society wanted to come down and pitch in another seven hundred thousand dollars to do our windows, I'm all for that, but, uh, I haven't heard them say anything about that. So we've submitted our plans to ECD. They're looking them over. We don't think there's gonna be any problems, but I just wanted y'all to know what we were having internal discussions on, and that's, you know, if something gets said or done, I'd say, I, I'm looking for more, I'm looking for the most efficient, effective way we can do this, and, and the less, less dollars we have to spend on that end will be that much better. Because I did talk to engineer Dave. They have the, the HVAC specs ready to, uh, be over, ready to look at and, uh, go to bid. So he said he would send them over to me tomorrow to look them over. And I said, uh, you said it's into it. I'm, I'm not an HVAC expert, so... And he said, well, neither mine. I said, well, I said, so we'll get somebody that knows what to do and look at them. Engineer will, but, uh, so hopefully that'll go to bid here pretty quick and we'll get that. But he did say that with what we're wanting to do with heat, heating and air, there will have to be some electrical upgrades in the basement, which we kind of figured in. There would have to be electrical upgrades and probably some plumbing as well, since it's the, the old building and that. So I feel much better when we get that, that back, uh, and get that done. Because I'm still hoping that we're gonna stay, hope, of course, we, you know, the grant's one point eight, and we've, we've put one to it. But I'm hoping we can come out of the windows and the HVAC around that million dollar, uh, level. Uh, we did get word last year that the, the elevator will need to be completely replaced because the parts on it are, uh, going out, out. We can't get them anymore. So we're, that'll be part of that project, and we did get some estimates on that. So we get all that, the major infrastructure done, and then we can move on to what we're doing inside. So just wanted to give you an update on that and let you know what we're thinking. If you hear anything or if there's pushback on that, that's what, that's our thoughts. And if you, if you think differently, please let me know, and we'll talk about it. Uh, our bond did close two weeks ago. We got our bids back today for the landfill structures, or building to sell and the blasting. Uh, the engineer has those, hopes to award those and get those started this week. That's about all I've done. Anybody got questions for me or anything I brought tonight? If not, you do have your financial reports. You look over those. Any questions for Ms. Daisy?
When do you expect any of the years to end?
If you're curious about balance, you can look at your cash flows there for July, but you can look at your starting cash in far left column of those. Um, your beginning cash balance, that'll let you know kind of where I was before entries are made, so... That'll be your base on anyway.
Okay. Any other questions for Daisy or myself? I will say again, if anybody asks, that fifty million dollar bond is paid by solid waste dollars, not Smith County tax dollars. Anybody ever ask you about that, that is not tax dollars going to that. That is solid waste revenue dollars. All right. Uh, moving on to new business. Uh, approvals. Item number one is a request from Judge Brandon Beller to appoint Burke Collins as a part-time judicial commissioner.
Motion to approve.
Motion. Motion to approve. Justin Malden, second. Junior, I heard you first, so I have a motion and a second to, uh, to approve that request from the judge. Any questions, discussions?
I would mention that we passed a resolution back December twenty-three that set those terms at two-year terms. So you, I know it wasn't in the letter, but that was a resolution you all passed that judicial commissions with two-year terms. And so here in a couple months, we'll need to renew any of that, what will be expired. But for this appointment, it's a two-year term appointment by, by resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hassler. All right. Uh, so I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
None.
Opposed? Is approved. Item B is a report on the debt obligation and also your oil and chip data. Uh, Miki is here. If you got any questions for him on the oil and chip data? All right. Thank you. That's thirty-four miles this summer, Miki. That's, that's, that's good. Good, good job. Keep doing what you're doing. We appreciate you. Appreciate that. Uh, all right. Moving on to item C, resolutions. Uh, resolution one and, let's see, one resolution one, two, three, and four are, uh, regular amendments to the budget, both that goes across one-on-one and the schools, one forty-one and one forty-three budget. Uh, at this time, I would take a motion to group and approve those, or we can vote on them separately.
Motion to group and approve.
All right. I have a motion and a second to group and approve resolutions zero eight twenty-five oh one, oh two, oh three, and oh four. Uh, any questions, discussions on this, these resolutions? Seeing none? Roll call, please, Stacy.
Richie Gregory?
Yes.
Helen Vose?
Yes.
Terry Gibbons?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Glenn Lester?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Irisari?
Yes.
Stephen Leish?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Cripps?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Teresa Bush?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank y'all for that. All right. Item number five is resolution zero eight twenty-five oh five. It is a resolution to approve a revenue anticipation note for the central cafeteria fund. And basically what, Stacy, if I get this wrong, let me know. And I think Ms. Glover's here. She wants to talk on it as well. It is a, kind of like what we used to do when we, before, when I came in, where we were borrowing money to get from, they were needing to move some money around to help cash flow. So this is what they're doing. They're borrowing from their, I believe it's their one forty-one fund and send it to one forty-three fund. So at this time, I would take a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
A motion, Junior Fields, second? Oh, second, too. I'm sorry. Didn't hear you. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions on this resolution?
Mayor, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware. So because this is an inter-fund, that they're borrowing from themselves,
Correct.
moving from one fund to the other, but the money has to be paid back by the end of this year.
Yes.
So the money will have to be moved back into one forty.
Yeah.
It's just to support the cash flow.
Matt?
Stacy, uh, if this is approved, how is it not taken on the balance fund sheet so we can, so we can see that it has been paid back correctly?
Um, it'll be reflected in two one eight one oh, if I'm not mistaken, on the balance sheet. You'll see it in both funds. You'll see a decrease?
An increase?
Yes.
Transfer within that, decrease within that?
Any other questions or discussion? All right. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Richie Gregory?
Yep.
Helen Vose?
Yes.
Terry Gibbons?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Glenn Lester?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Irisari?
Yes.
Stephen Leish?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Cripps?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Teresa Bush?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Endless.
Thank you. All right. Resolution zero eight twenty-two five oh six is setting up, it's a budget amendment, but what it is, is setting up the fifty million dollar bond as a separate, basically, we, basically, as a capital projects inside the two oh seven fund to run the construction expenses through that and keep it separate of the operator account. So at this time, I would take a motion to approve that budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Matt Inyard, second. Junior Fields? All right. Any questions or discussions on that? All right. Seeing none, roll call, please, Stacy.
Richie Gregory?
Yep.
Helen Vose?
Yes.
Terry Gibbons?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Glenn Lester?
Yes.
Danny Irisari?
Yes.
Stephen Leish?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Cripps?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Teresa Bush?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. Resolution zero eight twenty-two oh, twenty-two five oh seven and oh eight are surplus item list. We just need to approve these lists so they can be sold, uh, and they're not needed anymore to be sold.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve both of those?
Group approve.
Okay. Motion to group and approve oh seven and oh eight?
Second.
Second. Uh, Mr. Fields, I have a motion and a second to group and approve resolution twenty-five oh seven and oh eight. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Richie Gregory?
Yes.
Helen Vose?
Yes.
Terry Gibbons?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Glenn Lester?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Irisari?
Yes.
Stephen Leish?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Cripps?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Teresa Bush?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Out of resolution zero eight twenty-two five oh nine is the reappointment of Smith County genealogist and historian, Mr. John Wagner, Jr. I would need a motion and a second to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve in a second. Matt Inyard?
I'll probably approve it.
Oh, you want a group of them?
I'm gonna approve, uh, oh eight two, uh, two zero two five one zero, resolution to appoint members to the Smith County Regional League of Commissioners.
Okay. All right. I have a motion to group and approve those?
You need to drop this first.
All right. We can throw yours.
I was drawing, I'm saving it.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Neat work. All right. We have a motion to approve both appointments of the genealogist and the planning commission member. Any questions or discussions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
None.
Opposed? They are done. All right. Item number eleven is zero twenty-eight twenty-five eleven. It increases the mineral service tax from fifteen cents a ton to twenty cents a ton. Curtis did check, took some of that a minute ago.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Matt Inyard, second. Junior Fields, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions on this one?
I would mention that although it does raise it to twenty, you'll also notice that it follows the statute that they have where it's a sta, a staggered increase. So what you're doing right now will affect, it will let it go into effect in years to come, where the statute allows it to go into an increase in years to come. So, uh, for today, you're raising it to twenty, but...
Five years ago, it's twenty-five.
Correct.
And ten years ago, it was thirty. Okay.
You know, obviously...
How much revenue would we believe in this?
Uh, yeah, we had, now, when the zinc mine was blowing and going, it was around a hundred fifty thousand dollars, I think, is what Miki was getting out of that. So, and that was at fifteen, so there'll be an increase. But again, uh, it'll just depend on what Rogers Group do is, and if there's new minerals being extracted from the ground. Hard to say exactly what it is. All right. Any other questions or discussions? All right. Seeing none, roll call, please, Stacy.
Richie Gregory?
Yes.
Helen Vose?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Glenn Lester?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Irisari?
No.
Stephen Lish?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Cripps?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Teresa Bush?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, item number twelve is Resolution Zero Eight Twenty Twenty Five Twelve, Rules for the Smith County Commission. Uh, this resolution, if I'm not mistaken, is sponsored by Commissioner Justin Malden, and I will turn it over to let him discuss this. Is that correct, Justin, was you?
It's part of the committee.
Part of the committee, yeah.
Can't be with committee, yeah, so, uh, first, I will say this, it, it, this is a lot for the commission to take in, so I do not expect a vote necessarily tonight, uh, for this, uh, but we did have a committee that we appointed, um, that consisted of Commissioner Cripps, Commissioner McDonald, and Commissioner Elrod up until he vacated his, uh, seat. Um, and so, we went through, we met several times, and this is, uh, what we came up with, um, the body of this, based upon some analysis, we looked at nine other counties, kind of how they did things, and some other counties we liked what they did, other counties we didn't like what they did, um, but pretty much every other county operates with some sort of rule base for how things are done. As it's done right now, and, and Mr. Hassler, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, we, we basically operate off of state statutes, you know, general law of state statute is how we do everything. We don't have anything in place, um, or anything other than that, so, and so, all this is trying to do is, really, most of it is just formalizing what we already do anyway and making it more consistent, uh, from year to year with how we do things. So, I can spend time going through this and explain the thought process, uh, based off the feedback from the committee, or I can field questions, y'all can take this back, and we can revisit it again if y'all want to, whatever the will of the committee is. Commissioner, I should say.
We need, we would need a motion and a second to discuss. And we'll say, just a second question. Will we need a motion to approve or deny before we can do questions or discussions of sent to this presentation?
Well.
Or to spin rules and discuss it?
Yeah, ordered, yeah, that too, ordered, or motion to table it.
Yeah.
You know.
Motion to table and discuss.
Well, motion, let me get, let's get a motion to approve on there, and I'll be fine offering the table, because this body wants a motion to approve Resolution Twelve.
I have a motion to approve. Second, Matt, I have a motion.
Just a second discussion.
Yep, I have a motion and a second to, uh, approve the rules package. Now, Ms. Stacy, sorry.
I like this, I think this shows rules and decorum for us, but what rules and decorum do we have for the folks that come and visit?
Well, this.
And the order of business.
This is not, this is not what you're voting on.
I, I understand what we're talking about, procedure. This is not this?
No.
No, no, that's something that Charlie gave you, that's a short cut sheet to Rogers Rule, or you should have your rules package.
Yeah, this is a. I thought that was on the procedures.
Yeah, no, this is a, I, I guess it might be a little unfortunate that this is put on the table, same notice.
And I thought all of this was this, and I'm like, okay.
No, this is a.
That is a.
This is a kind of a Robert.
Well, I want to talk about this then, whatever.
Well, this, I don't know that there's anything to comment on that.
Well, I said what I wanted to say, so.
Yeah, okay.
We need the forums for when people come in the audience as well. If we're going to abide by this, we need some from the audience. That's our.
Okay.
And just for clarity, this body has never, I know we had Robert's rules handed out to us, but this body has never adopted Robert's rules, we do not operate under Robert's rules. When I say, we operate under general state statute, this body operates under general state statute, and the rules as presented, they have parliamentary authority in them, but they do not formally adopt Robert's rules, and the committee, and, and Javen, you speak up on this, you know, our thoughts on it are, if we adopt them, then we bind ourselves to all the nitty gritty of Robert's rules, and we don't necessarily want to do that. As far as the forum, if you go through what's presented, there are decorum, um, standards in there, there's also, you know, procedures to remove people who are unruly as well within the procedures.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions on this motion?
Justin, what is it actually changed from what we re, what we normally do? Okay, so just try to go high level, so, the, um, yeah, medium point, Rule One, basically is unchanged, except allowing members of the commission a formal way for them to be able to call meetings, um, if needed. Rule Two sets the order of business, and y'all can see that's laid out there, there's some shifting of some things, just to, again, making sure there's clarity, like appointment of vacant seats is going to go before any business is done, and those kind of things. Um, there's also, we added in there, if county officials want to give reports, there's a standing agenda item for any county, for any county official to present to the commission. That way, they have a agenda item, they want to show up to a meeting, they want to present, there's a standing item there for them, that way, they have, have the opportunity, same thing for the county attorney, if there's anything he wants to do, um, as well, uh, so, it expands upon reports a little bit to include some additional sections. Organization of the commission, Rule Three, basically the same way that we do, nothing is really changing there, um, except for who serves as the clerk of the commission. So, there is a difference there, and that is because statute says, and, and, uh, I talked to Amanda about this last week, um, statute says that the county clerk serves as the clerk of the commission. That's not how we have been doing it, um, but that is what statute says. It's not my opinion on who's better at it or who's worse at it, it's what state statute says, in order to be compliant with what we're supposed to be doing from statutory authority, that's why that's been placed, uh, in there. Um, there's a section about the sheriff in there, and, and I spoke to the sheriff after our last commission meeting about the verbiage of that, and he was okay with it, I talked to the county attorney about the wording about the county attorney, um, as well, but he's, he's fine with it. Um, Rule Four, uh, which is page five of the rules, page fifty-two in the packet, goes through who's allowed to address the commission. Uh, we can introduce non-members of the commission, commissioners can, but they have to make a motion for a non-member of the commission to address. It does allow the chairperson to introduce non-members, just like, uh, the mayor did tonight with Mr. Charlie, where if, if somebody needs to present for something, there's no motion required, the mayor can do that, um, and then also, again, county officials, kind of getting, that kind of goes with that standing item, county officials can consent, uh, for reports, and then talks about public comment, public comment was essentially left unchanged from the resolution that we've already got. As far as gaining the floor, raise your hand, be called upon, so that we, you know, just to keep order. There is the refusal, uh, Ms. Bush, you spoke upon that on page fifty-three, Rule Four Point Three is the refusal being ordered, it speaks about if any person, commissioner or otherwise, so, if anybody, whether a member or a non-member is, is unruly, um, then there's procedures there to remove them, there's also procedure there, uh, if this body doesn't agree with the removal of somebody, this body can override the chair too and bring them back. And anything from, again, we don't formally adopt it at Rule Twelve, Robert's rules, but anything that, the, the, the ruling of the chair could be appealed to, um, by, by the members of the body, so. Motions are in there, Rule Five, that's page fifty-four, really, again, that's, that's nothing different than the way that we do things, statute rule that's in there. Rule Six, it, there is a change here for resolutions, and it says resolutions can be introduced by a commission or the county mayor. So, any commissioner can introduce a resolution, the county mayor can introduce a resolution, um, but it's got to be in writing, uh, but it does stipulate in there that it be, any resolution that comes to this body needs to go through the appropriate committee first before it comes to the commission, but the commission can override that with a two-thirds vote. If there's something that we have to get passed that's timely, that's emergent, we can override that and vote to consider things, um, without going through, and it goes through the process of getting that submitted to the mayor for consideration, that if the mayor doesn't serve as chair, the mayor has veto power, and he can decide to sign something or not sign something. Elections and appointments is basically the way that statute carries it out. Uh, the biggest difference on here is, there's a five-minute lint time limit for anybody to speak who, um, would like to be appointed or who's requesting to be appointed, and there's procedures in place for actually how we conduct the vote, because anytime we have more than two people, we have three or more people, we have to put that in our motion that this is the way we choose to vote. Essentially, it says, if there's, you know, you got to have the majority to be appointed, that's what state statute says, but if there's, say there's four people, we vote, if, if the lowest person, if nobody gets a majority, the lowest person automatically drops off, and we go to a vote a second time with the next three, and that process continues until somebody gets a majority, uh, vote, so it's just, we don't have to ask about how we're going to vote each and every time. Uh, Rule Nine is appropriation request, basically says, what's already been done, the appropriation gets submitted to the Director of Finance, she summarizes it, puts it into resolution form, uh, for the purposes of this, the way that the committee had discussed it was, and so that everybody understands, if a budget appropriation request is done, so a budget amendment after the annual budget is done, if it does not affect the total appropriations for the county budget, it can come straight to the commission. So, that's if somebody's working within their budget, they're moving money, so they're just moving line items, that can come straight to the commission without actually having to go through the committee, so we can save that process. If it is asking for a fund draw, if it's asking for additional money, so if it's asking for more, more and more money in their budget, then it goes to the budget committee first for them to review it before it comes to the, to the commission. And then there's a line in there that just says the Director of Finance will advise us on fund availability, fund balance, those kind of things, uh, here in the budget. Again, those are things we already do, and that we ask for anyway. Rule Nine just lays out the agenda preparation, again, we don't really have formal rules on the agenda preparation, but it sets a deadline, uh, of seven calendar days before the meeting for agenda requests to be submitted, and then the clerk and the chairperson will get that agenda formulated and distributed no less than five days before the meeting, and, again, we can amend the agenda, there's a rule in there by two-thirds vote. Uh, Rule Ten just says, all the commission members and the committees of the commission, meeting minutes, uh, agendas approved minutes, the member, the names of the members will be posted on the county website, and then we already do this anyway, but commissioners have their phone number and county email listed as well. Any questions up to this point? I keep rambling, I'm just, okay. Rule Eleven is committee and reports, and this is where we didn't go as far as we probably could have with the committees, um, we made the decision that we were not diving in to this, and if this gets approved, there is a committee that has oversight of rules, they can deal with it further, because it was going to be long and convoluted. Uh, but the way that it is on here is committees are appointed in September, chairperson still, uh, makes the, the recommendation for appointment, you know, subject to approval of the commission. The difference is, it is two-year terms, and they're appointed in even number of years. So, committees would be a two-year term, uh, that this and budget committee were probably the two things that were discussed more than anything else in committee, kind of how to, how to do that, and there were some differing opinions, um, on that, uh, but this, for our committee, there's four committees that are listed in there, they're required to meet by October thirty-first, to elect the chairperson, a vice chairperson, and secretary, and then the committees, or those four standing committees are required to meet once a quarter. As it is now, we have two committees of this commission that were appointed eleven months ago that have not met for the past eleven months, and so, we want to make sure that we're appointing committees, they have a job to do, and, and they're fulfilling the job, uh, that they have, uh, that they've been assigned to do. So, with this, there were four standing committees that were proposed, those are Building Grounds and Roads Committee, and most of these are so between Dory, uh, so if you've got questions, I'm glad to answer them. Second one was Public Safety Committee, third was Solid Place Committee, and then the fourth was Rules and Policy Committee. So, those would be four standing committees composed of six commissioners each, so every commissioner would be appointed to one, one of those committees and serve, uh, in, to serve on those committees if these rules are passed. There is a rule in here for committee attendance that says, if you do not show up and you miss multiple meetings, you know, unexcused, and you're not again fulfilling your obligations to your committee, then you'll lose your committee assignment, and that season will come vague, and that's, that's done with the purpose of reducing the, reducing the, the amount of committee members so that committee can continue to function. So, if two members aren't showing up, you got six people, you got to have four votes to do anything and everything, you don't have those other four show up, they can't, that committee can't function. So, we wanted something in there for that as well, and then it says committees, uh, will report, again, we do this with meeting minutes and other things, the committee will send reports to the commission. In addition, there was a proposal, uh, the committee recommended to do an annual report by committee as well, for what the committee has done over the past year. On Rule Eleven Point Seven, that is statutory committees, that is outside of budget committee, it is a, it is simply a list, it is not proposing any new committees here, there are no changes, it is a list of the existing appointments and committees and boards and offices that this body already does. We just, we've already done a few of them tonight, we did the county historian, and we made an appointment, uh, to the, the planning commission. Uh, so, those are just simply a list of what we appoint for so that commissioners are aware, uh, it may, I may be missing some on there, uh, there were some that I didn't know existed through this process that we, that we learned about. Um, so, some of the, I should say, some of these we appoint to, some of these we do not, but it's just a listing, so everybody's aware of the committees that are statutory that this county has. Budget committee is the one that there was some, quite a bit of discussion, I should say, on, uh, whether we want to change how it's organized. Functionally, it will stay the same, with the exception of hearing budget amendment requests that have an increase in appropriation. Uh, so, i- if you go to that in page sixty-one, under budget committee, that first, um, uh, part of the rule is just pointing to the resolution that this committee adopted last year, uh, establishing it, because when we adopted the A U One Act, there was actually purch, there could be a purchasing committee that is separate, there could be a budget committee that's separate, and an investment committee that was separate. Uh, the commission has taken the, the stance that purchasing and investment follow the financial management committee, but they did pull budgets out, and it doesn't make sense for the financial management committee to be the budget committee for the county, uh, so that's what that is stating and in reference to. The only thing that's changing is it's still going to be six members, but it's going to be terms of two years for budget committee as well, so, but it's going to be rotating terms, so, six members, three each with two-year terms, but the proposal will be, if this is adopted, when the chair, or someone, the mayor, gives his recommendations for budget committee, three will be one-year terms, and three will be two-year terms to start, and then every year, we will appoint three people to a two-year term. This received more discussion than anything else in committee, um, kind of what to, to do with the, what to do with that. And I was outnumbered, I'll just tell you, I was outnumbered, so, um, um, so, yeah, so that is the proposal that is before you for budget committee and everything, and then Rule Twelve is just stating, if we want to adopt these, and it's written into the resolution, two-thirds vote to adopt the rules, once they're adopted, two-thirds vote to amend the rules. We'll call attention to Twelve Point Three on that last page that says parliamentary authority. It does say, these rules explicitly decline to adopt Robert's rules of order, issues of parliamentary order will be based on these rules and decided by the chairperson, subject to an appeal, the ruling of the chairperson is described in Rule Four Point Four. So, it's up to the chairperson to be the parliamentarian, but again, there is a mechanism there to, to overrule it, and then the last thing in there is we're just going to abide by meetings, so we threw that in with this one. I'll take, any questions, concerns, or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, what is a policy to add to this? I believe strongly, and Mayor Mason Hills Pierce for me, very regular, I believe we need county-wide parks and recreation departments, we've got a beautiful park, we've got a beautiful walkway, maybe we could work with South Partridge in Gordonsville and put some things together, maybe there's power in multiple entities requesting money, however, each park is pretty nice, but we can always be nicer, we've added a lot of stuff here and there. Um, I'd like to see us add one and have our partners in the, in the cities be on that. To do what, maybe nothing, but how, how would we know? Not saying that Mayor Mason's not done whatever, but maybe we could put our heads together and do some things collectively.
We have, me along with other mayors have discussed, you can go after a T D E C Parks and Recs Master Plan, and that's a grant that we're going to look at and go after, so that, you got to have, you will have to have that to apply, apply for park grants going forward, so we're going to look at that, and I'm sure there will probably be some type of committee inside that plan that, to, to do that, so.
What's the day number?
The, that's a, the.
Well, you said that there's a T D E C master plan that needs to be worked on.
Yeah, I, we hadn't, I haven't, had, I mean, we've just started preliminary discussion, we haven't even talked to a grant writer yet, it's just been something we kicked around in some of our meetings, so.
Well, I'd be interested in, in adding to that.
Okay. Once I get some more information, I'll let you know.
All right.
We have a motion and a second, any other questions and discussions? Karen?
I'm, uh, maybe I missed it, I've looked through this back and forth number times, but speaking of committees, is there provision to do special committees in here if there is a, I, you bring up a good point, that if there is a special issue that needs to have a committee, such as, you know, we just, we appointed this special committee for rules, um, you, is there a provision in there for any special committees or any particular purpose?
Uh, no, we just named standing committees, is all we named.
Okay.
But I mean, it would be great, there, again, there is a rules committee to examine, I mean.
That may be something to do with.
Yeah, to stick, you know, you could, yeah.
It's.
Because that, that was what we talked about, is we're, we're going to forget something that isn't going to be perfect, and six months from now, something's going to get thought of, or, you know, whatever, so.
Yeah, easily resolved enough in a future rules, but I, it's not, it, nothing to put the brakes on about, I just, I wasn't sure if I was missing something.
So, is this an overlay of our rules that we have now that we've been going by, or is that, those rules not even tied?
We don't have, we don't, we operate under general state statute and parliamentary procedure by state.
So, we just, we've been kind of doing this, it's just.
This is stated, yeah.
We're looking at this to a, a written plan, so everybody can play by the same vote.
And, and it can be changed, like, like, like Mr. Hassler said, we, if this is adopted tonight, it can be amended and it can be changed into where, again, there's some things we just didn't have, have the time for, that really a standing committee needs to be able to go into, um, a little bit more in depth. So, we tried to keep it to where, really, there's, uh, we don't feel like there's an ask of a lot of change, there are some things, but like the committees, for instance, the past three years, every year, we've had different committees, we haven't been consistent in committees three years in a row with.
Or you could say that other people, everybody served on every committee. Which is, or you could say that everybody's had a chance to serve on different committees, which is, I, I like that, I don't like being tied to two-year terms, that's just my opinion, and I don't have a vote, but. and I don't have a vote, but.
Again, we can amend this too, I'm just, you know, it doesn't, it ain't gonna, listen, we cannot pass this, it ain't gonna hurt my bill, and it'll be fine, I mean, I just, we're just trying to get organization for everybody, and this is a good point too, when, well, how do I do this, what do I do? Well, here you, you've got, you know, you've got a guidebook that shows you how we do things, and if there's a question of how we handle things, do things, it's there.
Well, I think we mostly already do it, I think statute over the clerk is on like a different, and I don't like tying the mayor's hand up, it's his administration, he should be able to do what he chooses.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we table this and send it to the rules committee to look at before we take a vote on it? And the reason I'm suggesting that, that way we're not going back and forth.
We don't have a rules committee now.
What do you mean, the existing?
You want to send it back to us again, to the committee that saw it over the, yeah, I was gonna say, we, yeah, so yeah, we have that special committee, if that's what you're talking about, I'm sorry.
When we, when it was first brought up, there was discussion about, there already is a committee.
No, there's not.
They formed a committee.
Yeah, there's not a committee with me that oversees this, yeah.
Okay.
We did, we made a special committee, for, again, 'cause we don't have rules, so we can make the, you know, we can do. I don't mind tabling it, everybody going back or coming back and, it doesn't matter, wherever the will of this body is.
Mayor, have you said something about two years, do you think all of them should be one year? Do you like one year?
I, to me, yes.
I'll make this motion, I'll go ahead and do this, 'cause, uh, again, there was disagreement in committee, I will make the motion that the terms go back to, for, for standing committee and budget committee go back to one-year terms.
So you're making it.
Motion, motion to amend to the rules. To all committees go, standing committees and budget committee go to one-year terms.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to amend the rules package, to that all committee terms go back to one-year terms. Any questions or discussion on the motion to amend?
You're talking about both, I'm sorry. You're talking about both standing and statutory?
Just budget, yeah, budget's the only one that we had to say in.
So, I like the one-year terms, uh, for, uh, understanding committees, except for budget, I think having the rotation is good. Uh, from being on, uh, budget committee, uh, two years ago, it's a lot to take in, and you gotta go through your first budget cycle, just to figure out what a one-on-one is, and what a one-for-three is, figure out where everything goes. So as soon as you learn what it is, you're immediately off of that usual. There's only certain ones that, that come back, you know, or unless you spread the interest to the chairman, uh, that they, they wanna do it again. So I like the two-year term, the rolling term limits on that, uh, just because it is, it's a lot to digest at once, and if you consistently have new people, you don't know what the previous committee did, or what they taught us to, these departments that are reviewing and presenting to you, so you're asking the same questions, the previous years are done, they get frustrated, we get frustrated, it's an ongoing thing. So, if anything, I would, I would like the, the budget committee to be back to, to what it's supposed as we're, that's just me.
I, I'll suggest this, 'cause next year's an election year, so all these will be one-year terms, basically, anyway.
Yeah, which is fine.
Could we send it, could we pass it with that amendment for one year and send it to the, if, 'cause then we will establish a rules and policy committee and let that rules committee further examine it, because again, it's, we're basically gonna be one year anyway, because.
Right, two-year terms won't matter this year.
So, yeah, that way, that could be middle ground to pay.
Any other questions or discussions?
What's the motion?
Motion is to amend the, the rules to go back to one-year terms for all committees.
And adopt this part.
Well, it's an amendment, it's an amendment, it's an amendment to that motion.
Amendment is a motion to approve, yes.
Yeah, it's just, you're, this vote vote would just be on the amendment to, to change rules to say one-year terms for everything, not to approve, you're just amending proposals.
He said approve.
He, he said.
Motion, just to make the motion to amend, the previous motion.
There's, there's a motion on the table to approve. This is amending the motion to approve. So you're voting on the amendments, not the, not the original motion. This is just on the amendment to, to reduce everything to one-year terms.
Any other questions on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One day, all right, I have one day. All right, so now, we're back, on the original motion, the terms have gone to, from two years to one years on committees. All right, any questions or discussions on the, the rules package?
If y'all wanna kick, I was gonna say, if y'all wanna kick this back, or y'all wanna take time, it's fine, so, I mean, there's no rush.
I don't have a vote, but as chair, I'd like to see a little bit more time, everybody get to individually look at it and come up with questions and maybe something like that, 'cause there may be something, you did a great job of going high level, but there may be something in here that.
Yeah, I just wanna take two hours. Can we postpone the question if, yeah, motion table.
Second.
All right, motion table, second, I heard this one here, all right. We have a motion to table this rules package, any questions or discussions?
That's your motion.
Right, so the first motion we're voting on is motion to table. Right? You're pulling, you're.
You're pulling, you're gonna withdraw your motion to approve.
You're withdrawing your motion to approve and table, all right, so you got, back down to one. All right, so, y'all didn't even put stuff about how to make motions in here, shouldn't use that.
It is in there.
It's there, it's there, so, all right. So, the motion is to pull his original motion.
It's just a motion to table.
And to table the original.
I can motion to table, oh, they exist in motion.
Yeah, motion table, oh, they exist, okay, all right, second, second, Cordell, all right, motion second to table this. Any questions or discussions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is tabled, thank you. All right. Resolution zero-two-twenty-five-thirteen is to provide an education incentive payments to the county legislative body members of Smith County Government. Uh, Commissioner Junior Fields, I believe you sponsored this legislation, so I will turn that over to you to discuss.
The reason, the law was passed this year, this week, received six hundred dollars to go for doing our, it's annual eight-hour in-service training. Uh, the reason that I think we should get paid for it is because every, every other E D, EMS gets paid for doing their in-service training, which it is more than eight hours. Uh, law enforcement gets paid for doing their in-service training, again, it's more than eight hours. But the state legislature thought it was important enough for us to do the training that they allowed us to get paid for doing. It ain't like we make a, a short amount of money anyway for doing this job, and I think if, if a member's gonna put the time in, they should get paid.
Yes, the legislature did pass that, but they did not send funds down to fund it, so it would be a, it would be a county fund, just making sure we understand it, 'cause a lot of those trainings are passed, those, the states send us money, this one is not, so keep on, verify that, so, all right. At this time, I will take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I get a second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, all right. I have a motion and second to approve that resolution. Any questions or discussions on resolution thirteen? Matthew.
Junior, I understand where you, where you come from this, I do, but since the safety not fund this, I think it's kinda productive for this body to give themselves an increase when we not give our county employees an increase. That is what I have a problem with. I did my training, I have a problem with doing training, I think I, I learned a lot of things from it. Uh, I refer certain forces to, to other commissioners and say, hey, you may wanna look at this, basically the social media stuff, uh, that, that class is really good, uh, I just think it's kinda productive for this body to give themselves a raise, the county's gotta come up with the funds and do a funding roll on it. So I'm not in favor of this resolution.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Uh, I understand that, and I respect that, you, however, you said that the county did not give any employees raises, that's not true. All elected officials got their yearly raises, and then it was a couple of appointed positions that they, that got yearly, they got a raise, because they were tied to other positions, that is what it is, that, that is by law they had to get. So we are elected officials as well, the law provides it, and that's the reason I feel like it should.
I agree with both sides, only thing I wanna say is, you know, we're just coming out of budget year, we've already set our budget, we've got, Justice Sam, we've got a new election coming up this year, could, why don't we put this off till maybe right before the elections next year? And then, 'cause I agree, commissioners should, if they put the work in, get paid for it, but put it for maybe next year, start that again, for the new people that are running.
And I, I can appreciate that, but my only position is, whether it's done in an election year or now, it shouldn't matter, we're still gonna have to pay our people, or should pay our people, for the education that they're, 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 should be doing. We've got people that won't do it, or that haven't done it, I'm not saying that won't, that haven't done it, or it's showing that they haven't done it, and I just think this would be an incentive to get them to do it.
Any other questions or discussions?
I was gonna say, so that, you know, I think it, we, we need more well-trained commissioners that understand and know what's going on, you know, I agree, I agree with that a hundred percent. We do not, I mean, I'd be very blunt, we don't have enough commissioners that do their annual training, and there, there is no mechanism in place that is any sort of derogatory, uh, mechanism if you don't do your training. So if you just don't do it as a commissioner, you're getting this to pay, you didn't do, you didn't do your training. And so, I, I, I appreciate it from that aspect, but I do have the reservation of the timing of it, and, you know, as others have expressed, none of us do this for the pay anyway, we all know that, you know, none of us do that, and that, that's, you know, you know, no, nobody is doing it for, for that reason, and nobody's going to do it for six hundred more dollars either, so, so, uh, and, you know, so that, that's not what this is about, but, you know, while there were some, as Junior said, we did get raises, uh, that were tied, you know, you know, to state statute and, and the mandatory minimums, uh, I, I, for me, I can't vote to give myself more money at this time after we did not give it to the majority of our city employees, you know, our hard-working employees in the county, that's kinda, kinda where I am, so again, I, I agree with it, I just don't, you know, that we need, we need something, we need to be doing our training, and that's why, if y'all noticed in the rules, the training is listed in there as, as part of the rules, you know, that you gotta get your training in, uh, that it's our responsibility and our duty as commissioners to do it, so we need to be doing it irregardless of this, uh, but I just, uh, I can't support it at this time.
I would, I would like to say one more thing.
I had, I, Cordell, next.
I'd like to make a motion, just time to table till a later date, so we can, just get some of them.
All right, I have a motion to table. I gotta get a second.
Second.
A motion to table, Cordell Smith, second by Commissioner Danny Huff. Questions or discussions on that?
I would just like.
On the tabling.
I would like to say that I had asked for this to be put on before that, before the budget passed, uh, so it ain't like we're, I'm just waiting till after the budget passes, I'd asked for that, but Daisy had to go through and talk to C T S, and there were some huddles that had to be jumped through, so it's not like I just waited till after the budget passed, I tried to do it before.
Good question. Were all the agents dropped? If the training's not done, who gets rid of the ones that has another training? Does this body get rid of them as elected officials?
Never went down that, revenue.
There's no, there's no mechanism to do anything if y'all do the training.
Right.
Even though the law requires it, yeah.
There's no.
There's no punishment, there's no recourse for not doing it yet.
None possible.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion to table? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to table?
Aye.
All right, let's roll call it, 'cause I don't think, some didn't vote, some did vote, and so, yeah, roll call, please.
One moment.
Hold it there. I couldn't either.
Uh, Richie Gregory?
Yes.
You're voting on the motion to table, by the way, just wanna make sure you know that.
Helen Vos?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
No.
Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
No.
Glenn Lester?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Rosari?
Yes.
Stephen Lish?
No.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Krebs?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
No.
Teresa Bush?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Four and a half. All right, that motion to table passes fifteen to four. All right, moving on, uh, item number fourteen is your hazard mitigation plan, resolution zero-eight-twenty-twenty-five-fourteen, at this time, I will take a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, I heard Junior version, man, you boys, you boys are on it tonight, so I have Junior and then Matt with second, so, all right. Any questions or discussions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This is the.
Item fourteen passes. Item D is a list of notaries before you, I would take a motion to approve those notaries.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got Matt again, so I have Junior with a motion to approve, Matt with the second, so I have a motion and a second to come, so, all right. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Notaries approved, all right, any other business to be done? Now, y'all gonna have to get, when we get into the old courthouse and get our new meeting room, and we get the buttons, you're gonna have to get quick with your buttons, 'cause that will be, yeah, we like the Fast Family Feud, so, all right, any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned, thank you for your.